Good evening, welcome to our fiscal year 2015 budget public hearing of the Prince George's County Board of Education. As always, I'd like to remind you folks, including you very busy principals, to turn off your cellphones, turn them down, take a break as the cellphones interfere with the microphones and taping of the meeting, thank you very much for that. Ms. Parker, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Epps?
Here.
Ms. Eubanks?
Here.
Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Ms. Jacobs?
Present.
Dr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Monday?
Here.
Mr. Valentine? Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
I'm here.
Ms. Musaria?
Here.
Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public commentary on the fiscal year 2015 budget. The Board of Education deeply appreciates your participation in the budget process. Only with the collaboration of our constituents will we be able to develop a financial plan that best meets the needs of the student population and staff and citizens of Prince George's County and the Prince George's County Public Schools. Through the budget work sessions and public hearings, the Board of Education will fine-tune the plan as appropriate to ensure that it focuses on our key priorities. We have engaged in both these public hearings as well as a number of work sessions and quite a bit of work to make sure that we deliver to you the budget that you and our students deserve. More information is available on the website, www.pgcps.org. Please note that the next Board of Education budget work session will be held on February 24th here at Sasser Administration Building at 5:00. And the next Board of Education budget public hearing will be held that same day at 7:00 right here at Sasser. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt its budget at the February 25th, 2014 board meeting that will begin at 7:05 PM. The recommended budget will then be forwarded to County Executive Mr. Asher Baker, who will develop his proposed county budget and present it to the County Council in March 2014. The County Council must adopt a budget which includes school system funding designated by category, and then it goes to the state legislature in April 2014. The Board of Education will then reconcile with the county approved budget, and it will be adopted at a regularly scheduled meeting in June 2014. Colleagues, we'll now hear from our registered speakers for public comment, who will speak for three minutes in a public comment forum where the Board will listen to your comments. You've been, I'll tell folks who are coming up, you've been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The Board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, please be kind enough to complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual, and speakers may not address individuals or issues, and we ask that you, of course, refrain from derogatory or profane language, which, of course, we know you will. Yada, 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 let's get started. Our first speaker for this evening is Sophia Raisi-Sakowski. Would you please come forward? It's Sophia Raisi-Sakowski. Alright, you can go right there to that microphone, young lady. Right there, oh, we need to get, can we get, can we get her a stand? Yeah, we gotta step back here. There you go. Say your whole name for me, say your whole name for me so I make sure I got it right, young lady.
Sophia Nasreen Riazi-Sakowski.
Thank you very much, you may begin.
I am Sophia Nasreen Riazi-Sakowski. I am a Montessori girl. Thank you for giving me the time to talk with you tonight. What does a Montessori girl mean, you may ask? A Montessori girl understands that she is a child of the world. I have learned that I can help the world. For me, it starts with learning how to learn. Now I can take charge of my own work plan. At the beginning of the year, we make classroom values. We value each other and everyone has a part of keeping our environment nice. I challenge myself in my learning. The Montessori method lets me work at my own pace. It helps me deeply understand things on the way. My teachers do not tell me what to put in my brain, they show and guide me. Not just me, but many children love the Montessori type and way. We have a child-based community, and I would love to see it grow. In a Montessori middle school, we will be able to learn more and more. Our Montessori middle school with Montessori teachers will bring us more science and technology and the math, art, foreign language, and other opportunities so that we can be prepared for whatever the world holds. There will be so many things to excite our brains. We will absorb more and more, and we will learn even more about the universe around us. Our Montessori middle school will encourage our imagination to thrive. Montessori will let me fly ahead when I am ready and will help me to understand how everything fits together. We explore new academic areas independently. We are given the love of learning. Montessori allows us to work in small groups, and we exchange knowledge. In upper elementary, I have a fifth grade buddy, and we work together on advanced math. He is a big help. It is very fun and helpful to be in a student-driven environment. We need your vote to help our school to grow. When you help us, we will be able to grow into small, caring adults who will help solve some of our world's problems. Please vote us the money to have a Montessori middle school with Montessori teachers. We know we can do it, but we need your help. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leila Riaz.
I should just step away.
Yes, tough act, tough act to follow right there, gotta tell you, gotta tell you.
I was corrected this evening as to the difference between editing and revising, as she went through, but I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the proposed expansion of Judith P. Hoyer Montessori. Our journey has been long, and we've had a number of bumps along the way, but you have been there with us through this process, and we greatly appreciate that. What we're looking for is the expansion so that we can continue to more fully realize a full, vibrant, enriching Montessori program. And what you've done so far has helped us increase the equity of access to Montessori programs for those families who live in the middle of Prince George's County. So as you go forward and as you look at the budget, please keep in mind, we're extremely engaged and extremely dedicated to this form of education and what it offers our children, how it is a fit for what they need in order for them to thrive. And please look to your vote to make sure to continue through so you can realize the votes that you've already given. When you voted to move us to a different location for the full purpose of us expanding within that next calendar year, Dr. Maxwell's budget presented before you will help you realize what you've begun, and we'll be very grateful for it. Thank you so much for your time. We do have over 200 signatures from our small school community in a petition supporting the expansion, and I'll be happy to give copies of those over at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker this evening is Carmen Williams. Is Carmen Williams here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carmen Williams, and I'm the PTA President at Melwood Elementary School. And on behalf of the PTA, I can tell you that we are very excited about the opportunity to have the International Baccalaureate Program rolled out at Melwood Elementary School. As parents, we strongly believe that this will give our students, along with the community, a better partnership with local and international schools. This program would challenge our teachers with implementing a vigorous curriculum in alignment with the current Common Core curriculum. In addition, by beginning the IB program in elementary school and continuing through middle school into high school, this would establish continuity in our curriculum, and this will better prepare them for a career path, whether they want to be an artist or President of the United States, since this program doesn't just concentrate on reading, writing, and arithmetic, it's on the child as a whole. It will also help them to become positive and productive human beings of society. Finally, and most importantly, the IB program is an opportunity for our children to be able to compete globally, and we are very excited and very hopeful that the IB program will be coming to our school in 2015. So I just want to thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Lorena Shaw.
Good evening, my name is Lorena Shaw, and I come to you tonight as a representative of the John Hanson French Immersion PTSA. First of all, the PTSA would like to thank you for your support in the past. It was with your great support and listening to our parents that we were able to get a French-speaking principal, and that was a big deal to us. Your support has allowed our program to consistently achieve higher student scores on MSA through the years. The school board has recently moved us to our home at G Gardner Schugart, and for this we definitely thank you. This move has allowed us to maintain a full immersion environment for our students, and it affords us the opportunity for growth. The PTSA is very supportive of Dr. Maxwell's proposal to expand the number of kindergarten seats that are available in the upcoming lottery. Opening more seats gives families and students exposure to a multilingual world and the benefits of learning a second language. This positions them for the future by being capable, independent learners that are college and career-ready in the global economy. Dr. Maxwell has also proposed in the budget the creation of the IB program in the elementary years, which is the primary year program. The PTSA would support this proposal and would like to advocate that the program be placed at John Hanson French Immersion. The International Baccalaureate Program encourages students to become active lifelong learners who understand that other people with differences can also be right. The benefits of such a program are increased global understanding, international mindedness, a positive attitude towards learning, and heightened opportunities at tertiary institutions. We feel that the program is a good fit for our school as we currently have a staff that is native to 17 different countries. Our students are exposed to different cultures through their interactions and the study of the francophone world in which they're immersed. This program will enhance that learning and extend their exposure to other cultures. Our trips abroad programs serve as a culmination of the classroom teachings of international mindedness and the need for communication across all borders. The primary years program of the International Baccalaureate has a flexible curriculum to accommodate the current Maryland State Curriculum and Core Standards. Students will be encouraged to self-manage and direct their education through inquiry, research, and reflection. Social and personal education and the value of community service are lifelong lessons that the PTSA feels need to be addressed, and the primary year program meets this need and shows that all of these teachings can extend outside of the classroom and into real-world applications. The PTSA believes that beginning these teachings at the primary level will help ease the transition into the IB program that is offered at the high school level. For those students that do not choose to continue at the high school level, they will be empowered with the study skills and the knowledge to succeed at whichever program they choose and into their future careers. Thank you.
Thank you. I have on my list, is there a second Carmen Williams out there? Okay. Alright, then we'll go, our next speaker is Nicole Barnett. It's Nicole Barnett here.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Barnett, and I am here tonight with other parents and students of Matapani Elementary School, and I would like for them to stand if they can, to be recognized, and we're just here, we're here just to know that we fully support the proposal of Matapani becoming a talented and gifted center next school year. Many of our children are currently benefiting from the school's tag and the regular classroom program that's been executed very well by the Matapani administration and staff, and so we're just excited about the other opportunities that will come with the school implementing a full tag center program from grades two through five. Under the leadership of Dr. Hay and with the Matapani staff, I have no doubt that they are well-prepared to implement a program that will be excellent, and we just look forward as parents to continue being an active part of the Matapani community and in helping in any way we can to make Matapani one of the best tag centers in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Next is Tyrone Manning.
Good evening. My name is Tyrone Manning, and I would like to open with a quote from Ben Franklin, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." An investment in knowledge pays the best interest. With that, I would like to thank the Board for its consideration on making Matapani a full tag center for grades two through five. Expanding the tag curriculum will not only benefit my child, but will greatly benefit other children socially and academically in Prince George's County. In doing so, the Board has broadened the opportunities of our children to have greater success as they advance through the public school system. Dr. Hay and the teaching staff have demonstrated they're up to the task, which is further exhibited by the EGATE certification. The teaching staff has the training and, most of all, the experience that is required to deal with the highly talented students which attend and will attend this school. With making Matapani a full tag center, the Board displays a vested interest in augmenting the education of the children in our county. Again, I say thank you for your consideration, your time, and thank you for making Matapani a full tag center. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, I don't do this regularly.
Thank you, that's fine. That's fine. Let me say a couple of quick things if I might. First, my colleague Ed Burrows acknowledged our outstanding principals who are in the audience, and I would be remiss if I didn't at least shout out my principal Gorman Brown from Flowers High School. Go Jaguars, gotta do it. Oh, Mr. Newman, and Mr. Newman, go Rams, Sutland, I didn't see Newman in the room. I got two kids, one is at Sutland.
I know, because I got a couple in here too.
Well, we could, we could do shout-outs, we don't do shout-outs, but if we did.
I was just saying.
If you are a principal in this grade school district, please stand and be acknowledged for your outstanding service. You know, the other thing I'll say is, Ms. Boston, in addition to giving me good advice like that, just sent me, or just wrote a note, which I think is appropriate, and she, her note said, you know, "These are the kind of meetings that the press should be at and should be writing about. When we have this level of community participation, this level of passion, this level of caring about what's going on in our system, this is what should be on the front page of the Washington Post. This is what the world needs to see a lot more of, and they will because we're going to continue this work, we're going to continue to hear from you and listen to you, we're going to continue to do our best, and in fact, we are done with the registered speakers, and so we do still have some time, that was pretty quick, so if there are one or two other folks who may have some words of wisdom for us, I see two folks, I'm gonna let the young lady come up first. Okay, don't everybody stand up, but I got one, two, three, I got four more speakers. I'm gonna do the four folks who stood up, I'm gonna make sure to give you an opportunity to speak. Again, even though you haven't registered, I'll remind you of the three-minute room.
Absolutely. Plato wrote, "I would teach children music, physics, and philosophy, but most importantly, music, for in the patterns of music and all of the arts are the keys of learning." Hello, my name is Mary Nooser. Twelve Nousers, including myself, are very proud graduates of Prince George's County Public Schools. We all are productive, taxpaying citizens, returning the investment of our education. We also all volunteered in our schools. This is my 21st year of volunteering at the high school level. I love it, but I need it. You could say that I've also been a very loyal education advocate. I've testified before every level of education, government agencies. I've helped raise millions of dollars and will continue to volunteer until I no longer can. When I started volunteering, I kept looking around for a place to fit. One of those places was a remarkable outlet for kids. It was the high school music theater program. I saw all kinds of students from every background working together as one. Adults were training students in tasks that they eventually made careers. Over the next couple of years, I've figured it out. Most of those musicians and performers were in the school's honors and advanced placement classes. These high-scoring kids were also big scholarship winners at all the senior awards nights. My research confirmed what I saw firsthand. Music students receive more academic honors and awards than non-music students. Music students score 61 points higher on the verbal SATs and 42 points higher on the math SAT. Music majors compromise the highest percentage of accepted medical students at 66 percent. Wow. Performing music students activate all four cortex lobes, and part of the cerebellum is also activated. Musicians have a larger planum temporal, the region of the brain that's associated with reading skills. Music training, specifically piano instructions, far more superior than computer instruction in enhancing the children's abstract reasoning skills, which are necessary for math and science. I was one of the co-founders of the Bowie Regional Arts Vision Association and the lead fundraiser to bring an auditorium to all of us. For 12 years, we volunteered our time and services and scraped together every dollar we could find while not touching a single education dollar. It was our joy to turn over this auditorium, and since that time, I've been able to see every day the arts infusion and music programs are not fluff, they're fact. It's not a convenience, it's needed. I've learned over the years, and I'm asking you and I'm begging you for consideration of more dollars into our music programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you do me a favor, tell me your name again?
My name is Mary Nooser, and I'm a proud alumnus of Prince George's County.
Good evening, my name is David Kahn, and I'm co-chair of Citizens for an Elected Board. I understand that the proposed budget includes the use of nearly $43 million of the existing fund balance. It's a lot of money, kinda makes you wonder how much is in that fund balance and how much would be left after this. For those that don't know, the fund balance is basically money that's been taxed to the taxpayers and hasn't been used, either by design or by accident. And there are some good things to using that money, because we've already been taxed for it, we haven't gotten any education out of it, so that's a good thing, but there are some dangers in this, too. And we don't know, since money is fungible, what the CEO has in mind for the use of this money. In other words, what things has it enabled the CEO to put in the budget that wouldn't have been in the budget without this? The reason that's a danger is that if they are continuing programs, how in the world are we gonna fund that in future years? Because you won't have those funds there, and there might be a lot more in the fund balance that he can take for another year or something, but I would hope that the Board at Monday's work session will ask this of the CEO, what did you fund that you could not have funded without this? And are there enough one-time items in your budget that it can absorb that, or are we getting ourselves deep into a hole that we can't get out of in the future years? I also hope that it's fully subscribed, because I would hate to think that the budget has so much wiggle room that this becomes a slush fund, and that would be dangerous, too. I also hope that if you want to use more of it, you'll go back to the County Council for permission to do so. Looks like I have another minute, so I'll keep going. The other item, and I've mentioned this to the Board before, is that you are reserving millions and millions of dollars for increases for the compensation of our hard-working teachers and principals and administrators and other staff. It's good, they deserve to get paid more, but when you put it in the budget like this, it becomes both the floor and the ceiling, and that's not a good position to be going into bargaining with. It sets the amount and basically throws it to the unions and says, okay, you guys fight out, fight about how we're gonna spend that. I would like to see you work with our labor partners to change this cycle so that you can have your negotiations first, and the results of those negotiations should be then incorporated into the budget. It's a far more fiscally responsible way of doing it, and it is fairer to the unions and fairer to the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Burgess, I'm a paraprofessional at Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School. I'm actually here speaking on behalf of a colleague who was not able to be here tonight, but the Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School family certainly, this represents our whole entire family's feeling about this issue. First of all, I just want to say, good evening to the members of the school board, Dr. Maxwell, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the behalf of the students and the community at Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School in Laurel. My name is Kelly Burgess, a paraprofessional there. These comments were actually drafted by Stephen Mellon, who is our avid coordinator and who's very, very passionate about the IB middle years program, which has been proposed in the budget for this year. Tonight, I would respectfully ask the Board to fully fund the IB middle years program expansion at Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School. Commitment to the middle years program at Eisenhower is a vote of confidence to the achievement of the students of Laurel. We're a diverse community. At Eisenhower, students hail from more than 54 countries and speak 18 different languages, in addition to English. Our students all attend Laurel High School, which has had a successful IB program for almost 25 years. Currently, approximately 35 of our eighth-grade students yearly are accepted into the pre-IB track for ninth and 10th graders of Laurel High School. We would like to see that number grow because we have the student body with tremendous potential. Commitment to the middle years program means that students will have the opportunity to explore arts more fully and develop college career readiness skills in courses where basic reading, writing, and math skills are honed and expanded. In just the six years that Mr. Mellon's been teaching at Dwight D. Eisenhower, we have slashed creative arts offerings. Currently, students have just one elective choice in their schedule. This means that a student cannot enroll in band or world language or art or chorus and technology and orchestra. In fact, students in the ADVID program actually have no choices at all in their schedules. This means that the very students with whom we are working to ensure college is a part of their path cannot explore the areas to apply that learning that is taking place in core, taking place in core content classes. Commitment to the middle years program means a comprehensive plan for staff development that trains and is proven to retain the highest quality instructors who are committed to not just the subjects that they teach, but to students with whom they work. Six years ago, he arrived at Eisenhower as one of only two new staff members in the school. This year, we've replaced more than 20 teachers. Our students deserve more stability. Commitment to the middle years program embarking on a new, is embarking on a new paradigm of instruction that is centered more on the learner than on the curriculum. We have known for many years that a curriculum cannot be one-size-fits-all, it cannot, and that standards are just a bar to be reached, not a set of skills to be taught. Yet our curriculum is crafted more and more as a blueprint to reach the bar in more of a one-size-fits-all manner each time, using the IB learner profile to engage students using the IB learner profile to engage students in their own learning, around their own passions. I just want to say that I know that our CEO is a proponent of Good to Great, the book Good to Great. And in that book, there's a quote that says, "Not all time is equal." And in Laurel, not all time is equal. We are working desperately to reach the broadest number of students with the best educational opportunities, and the IB program in the middle-years would really assist us in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to Mr. Maxwell, to the board. My name is Dr. William Jarvis-Johnson. I am the president of the PTSA at Friendly High School. I have a student with me that I want to give part of my time to at this time.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Camus from Friendly High School as a student representative for the PTSA. I understand that even though I'm graduating this year, the renovation of the gym floors would not affect me as much, but would for the greater good. I played volleyball for three years, and I've seen numerous accidents along with other sports for both home and other schools. From injured knees to shin splints and twisted ankles. There has been numerous reports, even having gym class, you can easily get injured due to uneven spots. An example is one of our star players who plays for the varsity, girls varsity team, Marche. She has written a letter regarding her knee injury that caused, which was caused by the floors towards the ending of this year's season. So she wasn't able to play for the championship, for the season, last season game. If we were given the chance to replace the floors, it would benefit the community that would be able to host events from tournaments to fairs. And that's pretty much my assumption, my briefing for this meeting. Thank you.
Again, my name is Dr. William Jarvis-Johnson. I want to give a shout-out to my principal, Principal Adams. I do need to bring this to your attention. So, and I want to, first of all, I want to thank you all. Yes, we did get a brand-new refurbished auditorium, and we are celebrating that, but that's not enough. Too many of our children have been injured on that floor. I have pictures of this floor that's been there since 1970. When you walk on the floor, you can feel it moving underneath you because it's so uneven. I have had to take my daughter to the hospital twice now. And had, and she could not, she can no longer run track because when she was in volleyball, she got her shin splint so badly that the doctor said she needed to rest for an entire season. I want my daughter to get a scholarship. I think she can do quite well. But she cannot do it if she's constantly being injured on a floor that should be repaired. Too often, when we, when you walk down the halls of Friendly High School, you're always seeing a student walking on crutches because they've injured themselves on this floor, whether it's in basketball, whether it's volleyball, whether it's simply in a regular gym class, they are being injured. And we're saying that we've had enough injuries. For the record, we had a, we had a game there against Gwen Park. A gentleman failed. He got, he received a concussion. He's now in his junior year in college, but he still has to deal with some of the side effects of that one concussion because the floor is built on concrete. I'm gonna say this in closing. This is our first volley. It's not our last volley. We will be back. We want to make sure you know that we will be here until our floor is done. And we're not waiting until 2016. We want it done 2014. Thank you. And I will submit these pictures so you can see for yourselves how badly the floor is. And by the way, we just started a petition today, and we already have from parents, staff, and students over 400 signatures already to get this floor done. And we will have more petitions, and we'll call the media out and whoever else we need to call out to get it done.
All right, thank you. Again, colleagues and citizens and friends, as you see, we've come a long way. We're gonna, all right. So we're gonna, we're gonna wrap it up. I did say four. I'll let one more. Last comment. I was right in the middle of a real nice speech, too. I was trying to wrap the whole thing up. No, please, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Gina Bowler. I have two preschool-age children in Upper Marlboro District 9. And I am a co-founder of a grassroots group called My Bilingual Child. I want to thank the CEO for his proposal to introduce Spanish immersion among the specialty programs so that kindergartners throughout the county will have access via lottery application. I'd also like to thank the CEO for his proposed expansion of IB programs at the elementary and middle-school levels. And my request is just to, in the future, as you move forward, to combine Spanish immersion with IB programs, or at least have that option, as well as to provide more equitable access. And the last thing I want to request at this time is that the county, that the school district develops some sort of plan to do more outreach to families that may not have children enrolled in the school system presently. Perhaps their children are too young, like in my case, or maybe they're in private school, and they just haven't taken a look at what this county, what the school district is offering lately. Perhaps an email campaign to the childcare centers, the preschools. I've kind of taken it upon myself to update my own preschool, but I feel like my sense is the county could do more, especially with, you know, email technology. And of course, there's websites. So that would be a good thing, because parents are going to look at, you know, the PG County websites, as well as websites of private schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So as we, as we conclude for the evening, folks, as you see again from tonight, we've, we've built on years of hard work and commitment for staff and board and others. And we have some exciting new ideas, and we have a long way to go. And all of that is what keeps us on this journey to greatness, and it's one that will continue with your help and your support and your continued advocacy. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.